Thank you all for having me today. Good morning, commissioners also, good to see the rest of you. I always say that, you know, my district is very unique because I touch five different cities. So, and when we're doing stuff like Lockhart Stadium, I always do say that Oakland Park and Tamara and everybody else will be equally as happy. So, it's a privilege to represent you all. So, I think you all, have you been following what's going on from the federal level, state level, and did you hear Mayor Holness yesterday and the updates he's given? I don't want to be redundant. Can I, can I just see, are you all pretty up to date on what's out in the county? I'll give you an update briefly. Okay. So, you know, when we are going to reopen, it's really going to be a quad-county effort, not even like all the cities in Broward County effort. We all really need to work together as counties. Because like one problem we experienced in Broward County, you know, when we kept our boat ramps open, Palm Beach and Dade were closed, we saw a huge problem in Fort Lauderdale with other people coming from other counties use our boat ramps. So, when we reopen, it's really going to be a countywide effort and a quad-county effort. So, hearing what the Mayor, Mayor Hamed yesterday, I think the mayor of Miami, the city is kind of coming up with some of his own regulations. And you also realize that as cities, we can be more restrictive based on what the county says, but we can't be less restrictive. So, when you hear like Mayor Holness yesterday talking about opening parks, marinas, golf courses, boat ramps, and pools in multi-development units, we can do that if we choose to. But we can't be less restrictive. Like, we can't then say, okay, well, we're going to open all the beaches in Fort Lauderdale now because that wasn't on the list of things that can open. So, we do have a commission meeting today at one where we're going to go over our proposals. You know, Fort Lauderdale kind of led the county in closing things down, probably because we had spring break really, and the images that some of you probably saw with major crowds really forced us to shut down quickly. So, that's being more restrictive, right? We're allowed to do that. So, a lot of people ask about the beaches. And I have just heard from others, other elected officials, you know, in different parts of the county and South Florida, that that's really going to probably come later. It's not going to be in the first phase because it's probably just too hard to manage crowd control. And, you know, we really don't want to use all of our police resources on crowd control. I know they did hire some additional security guards in Miami. They hired a couple hundred to help monitor these situations. One of the main problems, and our mayor put out a really well-done report, hopefully you all got that, I really recommend you reading it. It talks about some of the areas that we're going to discuss today, basically, and he did, you know, he did a good job talking about that. And once again, it kind of hits on those areas I just discussed. But he also had, you know, people from the business community involved in that, and how do we reopen businesses? I know that's probably your main concern. You're not as concerned about opening our, our parks and marinas, of course, unless you own one. But I think this group, you own different businesses. It may be interesting. I know we have builders. I think, do we, it may be interesting if you all put maybe your businesses that you represent, just so I understand the, my audience a little bit better. I know you're in this uptown area, but your business in particular, so then I can touch on some areas, whether it's restaurants or hotels or whatever it is that you're representing. So, that will, I don't know what's going to happen with those businesses, to tell you the truth. I mean, I know builders are moving forward. That's the one industry I believe that's not quite as impacted unless you have supply chain issues and some of your workers are getting sick, but it's not from a government regulatory perspective that you're being affected. I know you do have your other concerns. Some people ask about, one thing we did also do is we closed down A1A northbound so people can go out and walk and get outside. I have a lot of people in my community on the east side of District One wanting to reopen pools at condos, so, you know, we're looking at that. I'd be curious to see what other cities, how they feel about reopening pools at the multifamily units too, because that, that's a little bit more controversial. And we're opening a testing site. So, when you look at the criteria that the White House has, you know, you need in place in order to get up and go again, you know, we need downward trajectory, which we do apparently, you know, we're kind of, we're showing that downward trajectory. We need capacity in the hospitals. We have that. I think we're no more than 50% capacity right now in our hospitals. We need to see testing, more testing. And that's the area that as a, as a county that we're lagging in right now. So, I know other cities are probably doing things, but we're all partnering together with different hospitals, different. So, right now, what we are planning on opening at Holiday Park as soon as possible is in cooperation with the state and the National Guard with about 400 test kits, like I said, at Holiday Park, so in the middle of Fort Lauderdale, to just start really ramping up the testing. We also just opened a test site at the Urban League, so that area in particular is the hardest-hit area in Fort Lauderdale. And that's in our downtown area, the Sis Trunk area, basically, that area that has the, is really the hardest hit right now. So, I think in terms of budget, people ask about our budget too. Our budget in the city of Fort Lauderdale, we feel, we feel pretty good moving forward. We are moving forward with all, once again, of our development projects. We've already issued the bond, 100 million for the police, 80 million we've issued so far for the parks, moving forward on all of our water and sewer building departments open. So, we are moving forward as a city with all of our projects. I haven't heard anything really stopping. We, at this point, we don't, we don't anticipate needing to fire anybody. So, we, we feel pretty good, but this is a work in progress and, you know, this is just beginning. We don't, none of us know what the fallout will be from this and how long it will last. But for right now, we feel pretty good. Basically, our, so far, anticipated loss for this, this school year is about 20 million. Once again, that's just anticipated and we don't really know what next year looks like, but that's where we are today. We'll have more updates after our commission meeting and after the executive order expires on April 30th. That will be really a crucial time, too. So, I think I'll pass it and then answer some questions when you guys are ready for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Maritas. We really appreciate your input and your insight and your overview. So, now we'd like to introduce and thank Commissioner Julie Carson for being with us today. She's here right, I don't hear on there. Yes, there you are. Commissioner Julie Carson, would you like to give us some insight into what your area is doing in Wilton Manners and how you're reacting and being proactive with the situation?
Absolutely, and thank you for allowing me to be here. I had a little snag getting in, but finally I was, I was permitted to get in, so thank you. The city of Wilton Manners, and I have said, is working very diligently, even though the city hall is closed. As you all know, our team, our administrative team and our staff are working very hard to make sure that we continue to deliver the services that we can. We are, as Commissioner Maritas said, we are working on a regional reopening plan with Broward County, Palm Beach County, Miami-Dade County, and I'm not sure if Monroe was in there or not. Yeah, Ms. Landy shaking her head, yes. So, what we are doing is, is working with these counties so that we can do a comprehensive open up. And like many of you know, we are not exactly sure when it's going to be, but we will follow the lead of the larger cities in the county so that we can collectively work together and not have, what we don't want to do is have one beach open, one park open in one city and not in another. We think it will work better if we work together to make this happen. On budgetary matters, again, we're a small city and our losses now are anticipated between 500, 500 and $700,000. We're not sure what we're going to do next year and how that will pan out, but right now, we are comfortable that there are ways that we can make up the losses in revenue and there are, of course, savings that resulted from this crisis as well. So, a little bit of balance out there. One of the things that continues to concern me is testing and the positive coronavirus cases in Wilton Manners. One week, a little, a week and a half ago, we were at 52 cases. Two days ago, we were at 75 cases. And for a small 12,000 population city, that, that the curve is not flat and the bar graph keeps going up. My understanding is part of the problem has been that the reporting has lagged. The Department of Health has gotten its numbers in, but the private labs have been falling way behind. And I, I believe that we will continue on the upward curve for another couple of weeks and then hopefully we'll be able to flatten out. Another concern, but I think it's, it's a guarded concern, most, to my understanding, based on the health department records, there is one assisted living facility, assisted living nursing rehabilitation facility in Wilton Manners that has positive tests. There have, to my knowledge, been two fatalities there. All the remainder of, the remainder of the assisted living facilities are reporting no infections at all. And I'm particularly concerned, my mother's 93 and in an assisted facility in Wilton Manners, and they have managed to keep everyone safe. Everyone is temperature tested twice a day. No one leaves, very strict guidelines. Things that we have done to mitigate, and I'm sure that many of us have done things like this, one of the biggest things, you may know, we are Wilton, which is a campaign to raise money for restaurant and bar owners and their employees during this difficult time. We estimate there's 7,500 service employees in Wilton Manners at bars and restaurants, and they are in desperate need of help during this time. The city itself suspended all parking fees, parking charges. We stayed all fines, all, no utilities will be turned off as, during this time for non-payment. There are certain other stopgap methods we've done to give a little bit of relief to the businesses that are open so that they can make it easier for their customers to get to them. And then probably the biggest thing, in partnership with Fort Lauderdale and Oakland Park, we've been a part of the, and Feeding South Florida, the food giveaway. 965 cars last week filled with food, and it was an emotional time, but it was also one of those moments where I'm so proud to be a part of this Broward County community, the greater Fort Lauderdale, Wilton Manners, Oakland Park community is, is so vital to making our lives better. And thanks to everyone for that. And so, that's where we are right now, just briefly. And I am also available for questions or input.
Thank you, Commissioner Julie Carson. It's amazing to hear everything you're doing. Your community seems extremely passionate and compassionate about helping people, and that is a breath of fresh air in this time. So, now I'd like to turn it over to Vice Mayor Jane Boland, and I have the minutes in front of me for my last, our last meeting. And we talked a lot about how your Small Business Month is in May, and I hope you can kind of touch on that and what's going to happen because obviously, small businesses are in great need of help at this point in time. So, thank you, Vice Mayor Jane Boland, for being on our call today, too.
Well, it's always a pleasure to be here. It's good to see everyone. So, I really think Commissioner Maritas and Commissioner Carson have really laid out what it looks like with the sort of quad-county collaboration. So, the one thing I'm going to say about that is, I think we all learned when this pandemic was really gripping us, that the lack of coordination is what was problematic, right? The sort of hodgepodge of cities and counties doing different things. So, the good news is, we learned pretty quickly, the four counties have gotten together, and I think we're going to see a much better response. Now, that being said, I think what I, I do want to talk about is small business. So, about three weeks ago, I put together my own sort of informal phone call with about 12 business leaders, entrepreneurs, including Mr. Feinberg, who's on the call today, to talk about what does economic recovery look like? Now, that was a conversation three weeks ago. People were like, how can you even ask that question? Well, I knew that we needed to start thinking. So, I did that call three weeks ago. Last week, I gathered a bunch of comments from about 25 entrepreneurs about best practices in opening. So, why do I say that? Because just like Mayor Trentalis put together this awesome report, I'm, we're doing the same thing in Oakland Park. And I think it's something that we all need to share together because our businesses know no borders, our residents don't really understand the difference. And what I think we need to be looking at is how do we re-instill the confidence as we open up? So, we're all small business owners. We all know that this is a grave situation and that there are vulnerable populations. We're going to need to have personal responsibility, the masks, social distancing, but at the same time, the psychology of opening up. What can we do to provide some safety and some, really, comfort to people coming into businesses? And I think that's what I'm thinking about. And one of the catchphrases I'm using right now, and so I'm sort of pitching this to Commissioner Maritas and Commissioner Carson as we speak, is something I'm calling COVID compliance. So, if we say you're a COVID compliant business, then you have met the standards of social distancing, you have added additional things, so, so some ideas that have come up. And, and Bill actually gave me this idea for his own store, is actually having appointments, times, there's a set number of people, 10 or less in the store at a time. If you're sort of a service provider, Nail Tech Hair, also doing the same thing, actually having less people in the store, having spaces in between to clean, doing those kind of things. Because even though we start to lift these restrictions, I think after this phase one, which will be the first sort of, we can go outside, you know, like, we can go in our boat, we can walk in the park, is how do we get people back into restaurants? How do we get people back into events? I mean, it's going to take some time. So, I say this not because I know the answer, because I think everybody on this call has some, some idea of what you think would make a difference in your business. And so, I would encourage you to share that, please, with me, but also with, with Commissioner Maritas and Commissioner Carson, because we can't have these standards be different. So, I see this sort of down the road, folks, like two to three weeks, we really need this COVID compliance. So, people sort of like stamp, boom, this is a COVID compliant business, not somebody who is not paying attention. And unfortunately, there are people, as we know, that are not paying attention, which is what's, you know, underlying a lot of the frustration about some people stay at home and self-quarantine and then somebody is having a house party. So, I think from a business point of view, is how do we all get on the same page so we're speaking the same language to the exact same consumers who take different things from us, right? If that makes sense. Our city, what have we been doing? I mean, much like every city, I think, in our county, you know, we've got a hotline, we've been watching those numbers, they're increasing in the number of calls for food. We've worked with both Fort Lauderdale and Wilton Manners and Feeding South Florida, which is a unbelievable godsend to this community. And we're, we're actually handing out food. And on those days that we've been doing distribution so far, my commission and myself, we've been delivering at the same time to homebound folks. So, we're sort of balancing that all out, making sure really no one's left behind. And I think that's something that's really important, all as business owners, I mean, we've got to keep the business of the city running. And that means permits have to be issued. That means offices have to be open. Of course, everyone has been virtual, and I think that's been a good thing. We haven't had any, any cases inside of our city staff, which is, you know, about 160 people, which is excellent. At the same time, we need them to stay safe so they can provide services and we can keep the engine moving forward. So, I'm a business owner, and for me, the last, you know, seven weeks, if we're on our seventh week, it's just about keeping the business moving. How do we just keep moving with some kind of revenue so we can move forward and, and then see the other side of this? And I think that's the same thing that really everyone should expect from their cities and at the same time, providing these, you know, really, it's like a social, you know, safety net for folks who need it. And what I think we've seen is unbelievable, unbelievable humanity from charities, you know, Kiwanis, Rotary, all kinds of people have come forth to make mass and help each other. We need to do, you know, what I think is, we need to then take that and make sure we get that sort of organism of help, really, in a more formal way, so we know who to call on. Because I think when this all started, it was a little like, okay, what do we, what do we do? Who do we go to? Because there was no roadmap. I mean, everybody knows that, right? No one expected this. So, the more communication, the more collaboration, I think is important. Now, there's one thing I do want to bring up since I have the floor. We're 30 days away from hurricane season, and I think that's a real concern. Going in, you know, if we are still at quote-unquote COVID hotspot, if we have a hurricane, I don't know how other people from other parts of the country who always respond to the needs of South Florida are going to feel. So, I think we need to start thinking about preparing ourselves in the midst of this, also as business owners, for hurricane season, as it's layered with COVID. Because it's, it's, it's going to be, you know, it looks like it's going to be active. I'm praying it, nothing happens, but let's be responsible. At least we know that's coming, unlike this situation. So, what I would say is, you know, this is a collaboration, these kind of conversations are important, and that getting everybody's input on what it's going to look like in the new economy is critical because we're on, in this together, no doubt about it. So, I'm available for questions and I can answer any more details if you like.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Jane.
Debbie, can I add? I'm sorry, go ahead. Thank Jane.
I just, thank you. I want to say that I love your proactive and positive approach to your community, which I know will affect all the surrounding communities of uptown and Wilton Manners. So, thank you for doing what you're doing. And are you going to, your May program that was focused on small businesses, is that shifting to another month? Because I did want to follow up on that for our minute.
Thanks for, thanks for, you actually asked that in the beginning, I didn't answer it. So, we have actually, so everything's gone virtual. So, our Small Business Month at this point is going to be virtual. We, the CRA has been pushing out two to three webinars a week. There's actually another one today on how to manage through this. So, we are going to move to a virtual world, but something I'm trying to get our city to do, and I'm sure my, my colleagues here on the call can understand this, it's like, I wish I could just call the shots on this, but I can't. But I think taking Small Business Month with a reopening point of view, along with COVID compliance, city of Oakland Park stamp would be amazing, but I'm trying to put all those pieces together. But at this point, to answer your question, you can imagine that that's all going to be virtual for the time being.
Great. So, I would, please confirm that updates will be on your website at oaklandparkfl.gov?
That's correct. Thank you.
Okay, great. Now, Heather, I know you had a, I'm sorry, Commissioner Maritas, you had a question. I want to turn the floor over to you.
Sure. One thing I'd like to get input from, you are, actually, let me give an update real quick. I forgot to mention Lockhart Stadium, Inter Miami, and what's going on with that. That's a big, you know, part of my district. So, they're not playing, obviously. They're looking at playing some games hopefully in July with a few teams, obviously not the season, but just some, some games without fans, you know, testing players on both teams before they play and all that kind of stuff. It's not, nothing's confirmed yet, but they're talking about that. And they also are hosting a food distribution tomorrow, 9:30 at Lockhart, so they're giving out food. And I'll be over there tomorrow if anybody, anybody else wants to come. We'd love to see you all over there. So, that's about nine, nine to two tomorrow at Lockhart Stadium. So, I just have a question.
Is there a place where you can donate food? Where like if people can empty their cupboards out and donate?
Not, not that, not at Lockhart. They're partnering with a company, I think it's Deliver Lean. They're partnering, you know, with someone who's going to deliver the prepackaged food so everything's safe. I know there are places, I'm sure Debbie, that, whether it's Feeding South Florida or something else that we, we can look into. I'm sure there's a lot of places for that. One thing I want to hear about from the other commissioners too is, are you doing any quasi-judicial meetings virtually, like your P&amp;D meetings? Or are you listening, hearing that, having the public hearings at your commission meetings now when you're virtual? And then I also want to know from the businesses, we keep talking about reopening. One of my concerns is, you know, for a business, for the workers, you know, workers need transportation, they also need childcare. So, it concerns me a little bit. I know our childcare facilities are open, some of them aren't operating because the need isn't there, but I get a little concerned about school or summer camps or nothing open or available for the, the working families who have kids. Have you all thought about that at all, or commissioners or business owners? Just curious.
Can I just chime in real quick? Yeah, so, Commissioner Maritas, we have thought about the issue with, with families that have children and that they need daycare. So, at this point, it's, you know, daycare's obviously private with school not being in session. We know that that's happening. I think it's, we really need to look at how do we support our business owners in supporting their employees in this situation? Now, I know not every business has, you know, an extra room here. Here's our new daycare, that's called the back room. I get that. But I do think we are at that point where we're going to need to work with businesses to figure out what can they do? We got to survey how many, you know, how many employees are impacted? What does that look like? Just saying from my own perspective with my businesses, that's what, that's what we've done. We've already, we've already planned. So, we're going to have, you know, people that have kids that need to come into the office will be there on those days without anyone else. So, we're like staggering it, much like I was talking about with, you know, sort of Nail Tech and Hair, is that we're going to stagger in and out so that way we can clean afterwards because we still don't know. And so, we're just trying to use our own space, but I think it's going to need to be a bit of a collaboration. And I'm looking at our own cities' after-school care to see if we could open that up for, for more people. I mean, that's, that's really what we're looking at at this time.
Commissioner Carson, do you have anything to add to that before we open up to the console for questions?
No, I think that the main thing for us is going to be our after-school, preschool program and camp because that has been a mainstay of the community and working families for years. We have about 200 to 400 kids in and out, and I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet. But we will address it and we will make sure that it, it serves our community and the surrounding community as, as best we can. We are not doing, we're having our first virtual commission meeting this evening, and we have not had a P&amp;D meeting. I will, as soon as I think the commission gets in order and comfortable with the virtual meeting, I think we'll launch everyone else.
We've been, thank you for that answer. So, at this point, I'd like to open it up to the group to answer the question from Commissioner Maritas, if you, if daycare is a concern for you and what the solutions are. So, can we take everyone off of mute or if you want to take yourself off mute to, to give your input and then we'll open it up to questions? No input on that? Okay. Dolores, can you take everyone off mute? Okay.
They are.
So...
Tim had a question, Debbie.
I'm sorry?
Tim has a question.
Okay, Tim, please.
It wasn't a question. I was just going to say that daycare is not a issue for us. We either have a bunch of old people or very young people.
Got it.
Belt daycare.
One question I have is, you know, the numbers are increasing in Wilton Manners, but is that, is that a product of more testing? Or is that a product of truly just more virus? Because it seems that we're going, we're getting better at testing, so is that part of it?
My understanding is that it's in fact a function of report.
It's a function of report.
Been delayed and the private labs have not been reporting as quickly. Now, obviously, there's going to be more testing, that's correct as well, but the, the jump has, you know, we went from 25 to 50 to 72, and that, my understanding again, is purely from the lag of reporting. Numbers being held back. So, Debbie, do you have time for one more comment from me?
Sure. Sure.
Two things I don't want us to forget. May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we have so many people who are struggling with mental health right now under these enormous stresses. So, I encourage each of your communities, your cities, your groups to remember Mental Health Month, have a proclamation, reach out to mental health groups that you're familiar with, or just call some friends that you know who may be suffering. The other thing that we did find out in Wilton Manners, we've had a very significant 53%, I believe, increase in domestic calls. So, people are living together and they're also having some police calls as a result of the stress, I'm sure, there. So, be cognizant of that in your communities, that, you know, again, people are under stress and it, they react in different ways. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else? Thank you. Does anybody else on the call have a question for?
This is Jim Senior. It's Jim Senior, and I wanted to ask, really, it's for Jane, Julie, and Heather. I looked at the very detailed plan from Dean Trentalis, and it was a five-point phase one. And then the last point was about the testing, and the tracing, I think, was mentioned too. And it just looks like you get through the first four points, and then that five-point almost makes opening a difficult thing. And I just wanted to, you know, just hear anyone's thoughts, everyone's thoughts about, you know, if that's something that's going to really be an impediment to an actual opening.
Can I? So I think, hi, how are you? So from the testing point of view, I mean, you're absolutely right. So what's a little frustrating is that, you know, the federal government has pretty much put testing on the states. And as Chris from Moritas said, we haven't had testing on the east side, and Mayor Trentalis talked about this last night as well. So us ramping up testing is going to be the impediment for us getting from phase one to phase two, from the federal government's point of view. One of the innovative ideas that I received from one of the business owners was to actually implement their own tracing. Now, how this is all going to work, I do not know yet. But the business owner said, I would like to ask everyone that comes in voluntarily to give me their name and their phone number, so we know who's been here at what point. And if something happens, we can trace back. Now, the problem is, that's just one business. And there's a question of civil rights and whether you have to provide that, and there's a whole, you know, a whole can of worms. But I think we need to start looking at that. And we may decide, you know, in our own free will, that sure, I'll give you that information, because that's what's going to make a difference. Because if you look at how clusters were contained in South Korea, I mean, that's what they did. They actively were able to trace and then suck you back in and contain. So we know a second wave is going to hit, we know that that's going to happen. So I think that's the question. And there's a lot of opinions about that, about whether that's what we should do. But I was really encouraged to hear business owners volunteer to even just make the request on their own, so they can at least provide information when it's necessary. But I don't have a full, great answer for that, but that's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, Jim, I appreciate that question. And we keep opening more testing sites, you know, obviously in Fort Lauderdale with the Urban League last week, and War Memorial this week. So I'm going to ask that question today, though, at the commission meeting, like, what is the benchmark? When will we meet that threshold to say, okay, you know, we've met this criteria for this phase one reopening? Because I think all of our decisions are data-driven, you know, based on advice from all of our, you know, healthcare workers, experts. So I'll ask that question. And I know we keep opening more, but when do we hit that number? And, you know, the state's been great to work with, I have to say. You know, we appreciate all the support that's come from the state. You know, we are the hotspot down here in South Florida, so I think they are looking at us and working with us. And, you know, we have a good communication and relationship with them, too. So I'll get that answer for you.
Yeah. Debbie, Madam Chair, this is Carolyn. Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much for being here. We really appreciate it. Question is, we had a virtual breakfast, our monthly breakfast last week, and hosted by Tom Hudson, as you know, as President/CEO of WLRN. It was really to do about construction. Debbie and Craig were one of our panelists, and opening and continuing construction and development. Debbie, maybe you could answer that. And Craig, in regards to, are you still going forth? Have you stopped at this particular time? Or one of the commissioners might be able to answer. I know a lot of development is going on in Oakland Park, Jane, at this particular time. And so I was just curious to hear your comments.
Well, we have a mix of projects. We've always, we've, we changed our strategy back in 2008, when we had the economic downturn. So we became a woman-owned business so we could be more competitive in government projects. And about a third of our business, maybe a little bit more now, is government. And government is moving forward, especially Broward Schools or the School Board of Broward County. We're on government projects, and they're saying move forward, and they're being as understanding as they can be with respect to subcontractors that have slowed down in production, because either they have the virus, or someone in their family has the virus and they have to stay home with the kids, or their employees have the virus. So there has been slowdown with respect to productivity, but we are still going on government projects. I would say our private projects, which are focused in hospitality and healthcare, hospitality, they, I would say, half of them are continuing to go forward, and some of them are design-build, and some are build-only on our side. But some of them, especially the smaller ones, it's on hold. As far as healthcare, we're hoping to see that pick up. We're an approved contractor for Broward Health, and we're imagining that they're going to need renovations with respect to air filtration and management of that. Do you have anything to add, Craig?
No, that's it. I mean, we're working, we're still doing our essential duties. But I'm finding where some manufacturers of specialty products are, they're not producing now, so it's putting delays on our projects. So it's the manufacturers, the transportation is not as bad as getting them to produce some of the products that are specified for our projects.
For example, doors is one that we recently came across.
Or different metal products, or, you know, if we're producing some steel stuff, a lot of their crews aren't running full force. So it's cutting back on their quantities and causing delays just because they can't perform. So everyone seems to be working, but there are delays.
Thank you.
In getting specialty materials and things like that.
Commissioner? Yeah, from the city point of view, you know, our bond passed in 2018, the $40 million bond for our community centers and fire stations. And that is moving along. We're not anywhere near to breaking ground yet, but it is, I would say, in sort of phase one for us. And those decisions, we made one in our last commission meeting, to move forward with the architecture contract. So, you know, all of our city projects are definitely moving forward. And what we're trying to do is make sure that, you know, really residents' projects move forward as well, you know, with permitting being open, and frankly, looking at new, innovative ways to deal with inspections, which I am hammering Mr. Feinberg on the backside with my city, to make sure we can start using technology and that people don't have to be there, and why can't we just do videos? So we are, we're doing everything we can. But we are definitely moving forward. And I think it's really important that the cities continue to run, because, yes, we are municipal government, but we also, I mean, it's very similar to running a business, and it has to keep moving. So we are, we are moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Carson?
Yes, we also are moving forward. It took us about a week to get on board, but we have online permitting. We'll do videos of inspections. We are making sure that, the bigger part is making sure that the community knows that. I had a number of people who called and said, what am I going to do? I can't get my permit. I said, have you called? And they were like, well, no. And once they, they just made an assumption that they, you know, was, everything was closed. And I reminded him, no, we are up, we are working, we will work with you. And I think perhaps what we're seeing is a lot more personal care of people who need permits and who need inspections, because we must kind of guide them through Other projects in the city, I think the main thing is that most of them will be delayed. The federal government, I think, has, they allow an extension of contracts, and because of the COVID crisis. And so we have a couple of contracts that came up on the agenda last night, where we are extending the period for completion. And that should be a normal thing. Again, most of it is just getting everybody on board and getting used to the new normal.
Thank you. Commissioner Moritas, have they finished the total development at the Lockhart Stadium and whatnot?
Yeah, you know, unfortunately, I don't know if you remember the timeline, but we shut down the day before their grand opening. So yes, they are complete, they're done. They probably have a little bit of some interior built out and different spaces, but for the most part, they were 100% ready to go. I did get to tour it that week just to check it out. I'm glad I was able to get over there. It's beautiful. The part that is not done is the community side. So you'll see some, we have a 20-acre park coming on the south side of the property. And I am still working with the community and architects and everything, just planning that with a great community center also. So that's coming.
We'd love a tour of that facility, if you're able to arrange that, Commissioner Moritas.
Yeah, I was thinking that also, it would be great. So I can certainly put in a request for, you know, the Uptown Council to come over and tour. So hopefully, yes, I'll work on that.
Maybe a virtual tour.
Yeah, I'd be fine. Maybe, maybe, I will be there tomorrow for the food distribution. Maybe, maybe we could do a virtual. Maybe I could take one of the TV people or something.
Or you could
I'll talk about it.
Or you could film it when you're there. You could film it. And then when we do our next Zoom, you can play it back.
Yeah. How do I, I'm not that techie. I guess I'd use my phone. I wouldn't know how to upload it somewhere, but I'll figure that part out. Okay, that's a good, I'll ask them about it.
This is, this is Craig Dantos. I'm known as Debbie's husband. That's how they know me.
Likes to meet.
I, I'm thinking about, you know, reopening. It's how to reopen your business. And we have beautiful venues like Lockhart Stadium and that park on Dixie Highway in Oakland Park and Wilton Manners. There's big open spaces where different businesses can sponsor their business there. They could advertise. Marine Medina can go ahead and make you all signs, so you can be exposed there and have restaurants open with their foods, and let people know that they're open and what they're doing, just as a, you know, kind of coming out meeting, but in social distancing. You have a beautiful stadium there that people could set up their little tables, not expensive, and get people out walking around, at least feeling like they're part of something that they're social, socially involved with, and make it like an open party, where people just walk in and feel more comfortable with the way we're social distancing and how we're communicating, you know, rather than just always virtual. Now, it's, we're going to eventually have to understand, we want to go to soccer games, we want to go to different events, and just get people involved more when it's the right time to have these open, like, parties. How cook?
Yeah, thank you. It might be a while before we have a large group together, but I did see a commercial on TV, maybe it was Oscar Mayer or somebody. They even said, you know, just go out front of your business, you know, wherever you are. Go outside your home and have a barbecue in your driveway. So, you know, I know you guys are in, you know, the uptown area. And, you know, one thing we did is we did rent abatement for like 39 businesses at FX, Fort Lauderdale Executive Airport, too. We just voted that in two weeks ago, because I know some businesses were struggling paying rent. Not abatement, I'm sorry, deferral, deferral, I said the wrong word. So that's, you know, where you are and where you're situated, you know, maybe you look at kind of coming out front a little bit more, because we are talking about some outdoor dining opportunities, you know, when restaurants reopen, too. So maybe there's some kind of push where we all kind of come out front, and we, you know, people can take a tour around, you know, wherever your business is located, too.
At this time, I need to bring our meeting to close, and I want to thank Commissioner Moritas, Commissioner Carson, and Vice Premier Boland for your participation and updates. And I want to thank everybody else on the call for joining us, and remind you to go to the individual websites for updates and information. I mentioned oaklandparkfl.gov, and there's wiltonmanners.com, and fortlottedale.gov, as well as flyfxe.com. So thank you again, and please email me if you have any additional questions or follow-up, and I'm happy to help.